Call September 19th, Broken Arrow City Council Meeting to Order. First we have invocation, Rich Maginere.
We can bow our heads, we're a reward of prayer. Father God, we invite your presence here tonight. We come with an expectation of your will being done for our city. May all those making decisions be led by your peace and wisdom. May your hand of protection and grace be upon this city. And as Broken Arrow expands, please help us through all the growing pains that come with it. Most of all, Father God, please protect the reputation of our city that we would continue to be a city of peace and prosperity. Blessings be upon all the volunteer staff, as well as all the first responders, and all that play a part in making the city of Broken Arrow a great city to live in. In the name of your son, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Rich. Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Udi?
Here.
Thurman?
Here.
Please stand and join Councilor Lester in the pledge.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item five is consent agenda. I need to remove item M. I have a conflict. Are there any other items to be removed?
M or N?
M.
M, okay. Make motion to approve the consent agenda excluding item M.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
All right, consideration of items removed from the consent agenda, is there any motion?
Make motion to approve item M.
Second.
Motion and second having been made. Roll call vote, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Okay, item seven, public hearings, appeals, presentations, recognitions, and awards. First, we have the consideration, an appointment and swearing in of the youth city council. Jennifer.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm happy to bring up the 2017 and 2018 Broken Arrow Youth City Council. The youth city council in Broken Arrow was established in 2001, and each year we recruit new rising juniors to apply. So this year, combined with the returning seniors, we have 16 total. We have nine seniors and seven juniors, so I'm going to ask them to come forward, and our city attorney's going to do the swearing in.
Okay, if I could get you all to the right hand, please. Aye, please say your name. I'll do it very slowly. So, do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend
That I will support, obey, and defend
the Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma
and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma
and that I will not
will not
knowingly receive
knowingly receive
directly or indirectly
directly or indirectly
any money or other valuable thing
any money or other valuable thing
for the performance
for the performance
or nonperformance
or nonperformance
of any act or duty
of any act or duty
pertaining to my office
pertaining to my office
other than the compensation
other than the compensation
allowed by law
allowed by law
I further swear or affirm
I further swear or affirm
that I will faithfully discharge
that I will faithfully discharge
the duties as a member
the duties as a member
of the Broken Arrow Youth City Council
of the Broken Arrow Youth City Council
for the city of Broken Arrow
for the city of Broken Arrow
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability.
Do you want to say something?
I might say, make a comment that the vice mayor and I met with them this evening, and we're just really excited about the, this class. It seems like even more, I've got to look at the dates, you know, to get the numbers down because years go by so quickly, seventeen, eighteen. So with that, I'd like to approve the appointment of the youth city council members for the seventeen, eighteen school year.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, welcome. Okay, item seven B, presentation of Thrive Your Money at Work Financial Report. Krista.
Good evening, mayor and council members. The 2018 Thrive Your Money at Work Financial Report will be mailed to just over 52,000 Broken Arrow households this week. It will also be available on our website at brokenarrowok.gov/yourmoney. In addition to the graph showing our budgeted revenue and expenditures, this year's document also highlights some of our economic development successes. And with Tom Cook's assistance, we also determined how much taxable sales has to be made in order to pay the salaries for a police officer, firefighter, paramedic, and a street worker. For example, to pay for one police officer's salary and benefits for one year, more than $13 million has to be purchased in goods and services in Broken Arrow. And you can see those figures on page 20. And this does a really good job of illustrating just how important it is to shop local. And so we will continue to put out that message throughout the community for the remainder of the year and continuing years, because sales tax is what this city lives off of. I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
No questions, but I did love that you led with that, because that's our major thing, is letting people know the importance of shopping local, so.
Yes, anything that we can do, and any opportunity we have to educate the public on the very importance of shopping local, we're going to do that.
And it's a great-looking piece, I think, yeah.
And user-friendly.
Yes, we wanted big pictures, lots of graphs. This is what I would call the Cliff Notes version of our budget book.
Very good, excellent job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven C, presentation of Upper Adams Creek Watershed Partnership Opportunity. Ken Swab.
Thank you, mayor and councilors. What a wonderful opportunity tonight. I'm very excited about this presentation. It's not often that a city and possibly a school can be on cutting edge, and I think that's exactly what we're going to be able to present to you tonight, especially with the installation of new youth city council. And just recently, we received word that Broken Arrow Public Schools had the state teacher of the year, Donna Grottl, and we've been working with her on this approach. So let me talk just a little bit about Upper Adams Creek Watershed Corridor. The Adams Creek is a very large watershed, but the one that I'm actually talking about really runs basically, and I'll turn around and point a little bit, that's Highway 51. So it runs south of Highway 51, picks up right around college, and will drain north towards Adams Creek. So you're going to pick up a little bit of Tiger Hill, far on the west side would be First Baptist Church, and then it goes all the way to County Line, 23rd Street, it'll go through the high school and that area. It's about 2.5 square miles, largely residential, some commercial, some agricultural. So you've got totally different type of pollutants. Now moving in a little bit closer, down in the bottom left is Highway 51, and you can see the buildings right down here. That's going to be the shops at Broken Arrow. So that's right there where the Olive Garden, the Target, the Dick's, the Cinemark on the other side. And if you've driven through that, along Hillside Drive, you'll notice that there's a creek in some what appears to be a wetlands. It is a wetlands, it's a regulatory wetlands. It'll drain to the north through Broken Arrow property, cross Broken Arrow Public Schools, and that's the big yellow square that you see. That's the high school and the early childhood center, and then the elementary school. It crosses them and then crosses under Albany 61st Street back onto our property, the regional detention pond, and then flows on into Adams Creek. You could actually walk from roughly the Olive Garden along that creek all the way to Neen House Park, and you never leave Broken Arrow city property or Broken Arrow Public Schools. So that gives us an opportunity that we believe is unique and unprecedented. Our vision, what if we partnered together and utilized existing regional detention facility right across from the school, the natural floodplains in between the wetlands, which would right there at Dick's, and then the regional detention pond, and then the regulatory wetlands right there behind Dick's Sporting Goods, that area? What if we partnered with them to really do three things? Make sure that we provide adequate floodplain, that's a responsibility of the government, we need to make sure that we keep our floodplains and the detention there and flood control. What if we improve the water quality through there? What if we increased or enhanced the habitat, the natural habitat? Those are the three goals that we have in mind in this vision. We actually have talked to Broken Arrow Public Schools, this is actually Mrs. Grottl's class, she asked us to come and talk to her class about hydrology, hydraulics, floodplains, and what do, you know, what does the engineering and the science behind it? So we had those presentations, actually spoke to about 300 students over 15 different classes. Just a few pictures here, the upper left hand is of the wetlands right there, that's actually looking towards the Cinemark Theater. And then the upper right and the lower left are the floodplains, one's on the school property, and then the other is in actually City of Broken Arrow. Pretty clean, pretty open for a floodplain. And then the last one is the detention pond in the bottom right. So those are really the three components we're looking at, a few different pictures. What could we do with this? Well, you could have structural improvements and nonstructural, some of the structural could be floating wetlands. The mayor and I were actually in a conference yesterday, and that was one of the issues about 20 minutes, that they talked about floating wetlands. Rain gardens, cascade aerators are different than just the pump aerators out there, maybe you recirculate with a solar panel, so you're energy efficient. Pervious pavement, access path to the floodplain, and maybe right around the detention pond area. Then the nonstructural would be a public educational, maybe a website telling what we're trying to accomplish here, what the benefit to the public, what the benefit, actually on the educational side, the students have that outdoor classroom that we were talking about. And a testing monitoring program, something the students can do to test the water quality. Are we improving? Are we making benefits right there in the detention pond? So these are some items that the students actually came up with when we discussed with them. This right here is kind of a rain garden, this is Broadway. The upper left actually shows how the rain garden's working as stormwater comes in off the street, comes in on the uphill side, goes down on the downstream side, and actually kind of filters out the pollutants in the rocks and the vegetation that's in there. This is basically, the bottom left is basically the same rain garden when it's not raining. It looks like an amenity. And then there's some natural vegetation that you can use to help with spurring the right type of growth and habitat. In the ponds, we want increased dissolved oxygen, better for the biological life. Also, try to reduce algae. So these are some ideas that we've kicked around, very inexpensive, and what are some of the benefits? First, it provides public education and participation, that meets with the component of our citywide stormwater permit that we have with the state of Oklahoma through DQ. We have to do this education process as part of the permit, so that complies. Demonstrates best management practices. Again, with our permit, we're supposed to be demonstrating, how can you improve, how can you do better management practices? This would comply with that. Then obviously, really, the last two, it improves connectivity and access to the floodplains through our property and through the schools, and it improves stormwater quality and the overall quality of life. So at this point, I'll just open to any questions, but we see a very unique, and as far as we know, an unprecedented opportunity where a city government and a school system can work together to benefit the community and create somewhat of an educational program.
Do you see this maybe as just the test model to do it throughout the city?
Absolutely, I do. This would be the baseline test model, yes, sir.
I think a couple things, too, the MS4 permit that we have through the state is actually mandated by EPA, and that's why we just have to do that. The other thing, too, that you can, the water quality, we'll notice increase, and the biggest way that you notice that increase is through macroinverse and fish, and you know, you have more fish, type of fish that you get, so it'll improve our quality, and our detention pond will be something that will see more fish habitat, and those are, it's really a benefit to the community and quality of life, but it also, what you're doing is also mandated by the federal government. So it's a great partnership, and I think it's really something that's very positive.
And I like the idea of the pervious walkways and things, where it adds another place where people can get out and get exercise, enjoy nature, and participate, and anytime you can get the schools and the city working together on something, I think it benefits the entire community.
Fantastic.
What's your timeline?
Well, right now, we're at the, we've kind of established the vision, and we want to start implementing, but one of the first things that we want to do is meet with the students and the teachers, and we've kind of started that, but actually create a land plan, so we know what we're doing. So I'd like to be doing that this semester, and then next semester really start maybe implementing a few of the ideas over the period of time. Now, this semester, we may do something to really kind of kick it off as a small little floating wetlands, to make sure that we have the public awareness of it. But our timeline is immediate, we want to start establishing the organization and put it together.
Have we decided on like signs that we're going to put out there? I know that was one of the issues.
Actually, one of the discussion, you have the structural improvements, and you can call them projects or what benefits, but through the discussion with the students, it actually came up, well, what's the name of this? We don't really have a name. Well, what's the name of the creek? Well, engineers are very creative, we came up with Tributary E.
Oh.
E. That's the official name of it right now.
Impressive.
Impressive, impressive. So what we thought we would do
Good God.
Is, exactly. Well, students, why don't we name this? They actually came up with, well, can we get a website, a social media, and put information out? And a part of that was signs. You know, if you've got tall grass in a certain area, and what are you trying to accomplish with that? Could we put out a teaching sign, educational sign? With City of Broken Arrow having their own sign shop, it's a cost of materials, so it's very cost-effective. So this really began to grow very quickly.
I'm sure Ms. Grottl had a lot of ideas.
She did. We sent her away to get an award.
I would make a motion to direct staff to proceed in developing a collaborative partnership between the City of Broken Arrow and the Broken Arrow Public Schools with respect to the Upper Adams Creek Watershed.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, citizen's opportunity to address the council on general topics. No one signed up, so we'll move to item nine, general council business. We have presentation discussion, consideration, possible approval of the citizen survey, together feedback for the 2018 general obligation bond project. Krista and Senator.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Krista Flash, communications director. An important part of planning the 2018 general obligation bond package is getting feedback from residents on the projects they'd like to see on the ballot. We will gather that feedback through an online survey. What you see before you are the draft questions that we propose asking. The survey contains approximately 30 questions, starts with a few questions to gauge resident satisfaction with the city overall. The middle section asks for opinions on road projects, public safety, parks, city facilities, and stormwater improvements. Now, those are just many of the basics that typically comprise our bond projects. We also want to know what the public thinks of some big idea projects, attractions that would bring an economic boom to the area. Our goal is to receive approximately 300 to 500 responses, and it is limited to one survey per household. You will receive all of the data in a compiled and organized format by the end of the year. As far as distribution methods and timelines, it is an online survey, and the address for that will be brokenarrowsurvey.com. We will advertise in the focus newsletter, there will also be a special insert in the utility bill apart from the focus newsletter to draw attention to it. We'll also conduct a citywide automated phone call, so all households who are signed up to receive the robocalls will receive a notification about the online survey and how to find it. We'll also put it on our city website, distribute it through social media. If people do not have internet access at their home and wish to take the survey, we'll have copies of the paper survey available at city hall for them to fill out. Again, our goal is to get as much participation as possible, so we don't want technological limitations to be a barrier for people accessing the survey. Depending on the response rate, we may look at doing a direct mail of the survey to households in Broken Arrow, but again, we'll determine that as we launch the survey and see how the responses are coming in. The survey will close at the end of October. And again, you'll receive all of these responses, so that you'll have a chance to review the feedback from residents before finalizing the bond package. Sheila Curley, co-founder of Six PR, is here tonight, if you have any additional questions you'd like to ask of her.
I do, actually. Surprise, surprise. So on question 12, where it's talking about various projects, and it's talking specifically about adding synthetic turf. I think in general terms, people that aren't familiar with synthetic turf think that's a luxury.
If we could put something that said adding synthetic turf that would increase use of
fields from 12 a year to 200, or, I mean, something that signifies that if we're going to put this in, you're getting significantly more use out of your fields.
Absolutely, and in fact, you know, whenever I'm looking at that myself, synthetic and turf might be a little redundant to one another as well, so there could be a little bit better way for us to identify and explain that. It might get a little bit long to go into that explanation.
Well, I know that may be, so I don't know, I'm just saying that if people recognize that if they do this, the fields are going to use much more than they would otherwise.
Exactly, for increased use. Absolutely, I think that's a great point.
You could add that for year-round use, you could use some just little phrase to make sure people understand.
Something that just suggests that there's a benefit to doing that.
We could probably use the words like for reduced maintenance and longevity, something long, we can come up with the right language.
Yeah, I just want people to understand that spending this money is just not to,
Right.
just because we want our fields.
Exactly, exactly, no, you're absolutely right, there's been a few things that from a luxury standpoint, that we've really kind of dove into, like why? Why is this on the list? Just to make sure that we're explaining it properly, and you're absolutely correct on that, so I think that's a very good catch.
Survey is very comprehensive, it does cover pretty much all the issues. I know we have a lot of citizens here that are probably going to support item 15, which is the veteran's center, so we, and they appreciate them showing up tonight, but I know a lot of people will fill out the survey. I don't think we're going to have a challenge getting to the 500 surveys.
I don't think that we will either, so hopefully, you know, with all the dissemination opportunity that we have, you know, making sure that we get that minimal response, that you all can use the data to really make informed decisions is what's critical.
So, let me ask you a question, Krista, maybe I didn't hear this, then, is each household then entitled to filling out one survey, and you're going to monitor that?
They will monitor that through.
Correct. So for the online
Tell me again how you're going to monitor.
Sure, for the online services, whenever you put in your address, it's a one-time address that you're able to institute. If you put in more than one, then one of those will automatically be kicked out.
Okay.
There will be the opportunity to receive some input from those that are simply business owners, but maybe they're not a resident or someone who lives in the City of Broken Arrow, so that's also going to take that data and put it into a separate section, so you can look at that independently.
So if you did, if somebody did have, this is the paper one, then they would have their address on this paper one, so.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I understood how that was going to be.
Correct.
So if I'm a resident and also have PO boxes for businesses, each of those PO boxes would also?
But if it's a PO box, if it identifies itself as a business or a business name or a PO box, that's going to go into a separate data form versus someone who's actually, you know, identified themselves as a resident. So that you can definitely hear from people who either work in Broken Arrow, own property in Broken Arrow, or own a business in Broken Arrow. They might not own that property, but they do business here.
Well, I felt that was important, to have those folks that have a vested interest in here, to have it, to have, to be able for them to put it on, to respond, but to pull that out separately, because those people have a vested interest, and there's folks that have business here that are from, that are from here but don't leave here, but have businesses, they still have family members here that are going to be very critical when it comes to passing this, because we have a lot of business owners that have a lot of influence in our community, so therefore, we felt like they should have that opportunity.
And that will show up, that will show up that way.
Yes.
It'd be separate data. Sounds like. And we'll definitely be tapping into the local chamber here to disseminate the survey as well, and make sure that they know all of their members know that this is available. So again, that data, it may not be someone who's a resident, you know, working out, but it's certainly important to hear their voice.
Right. So we're going to have a, advertise it in the focus, and then have a special insert to sort of get people there, plus an automated phone call, will we be listing it as on the public access station and other things?
Yes.
encouragement.
Yes.
Website and Facebooks and all that.
As many mediums or communication that we use, all of our communication channels, we'll be using those to advertise the survey.
Because I think it's key to get as much involvement as possible, so we get a good sense of what people really want and what they're willing to pay for.
Yes.
We certainly want every citizen to know that they were invited to participate, whether they pick that option or not, that's up to them, obviously, but we hope that everyone knows, and especially whenever the data comes back, the rate to release that data and share it with the public. Hopefully, you know, if they didn't complete the survey, then that might be some feedback that you receive later on, however, everyone was invited, and we'll definitely be able to show all of the steps where each one was received information.
And when do you anticipate to have the results of the survey back to the council?
To the council, mid-December. The raw data, probably at the very first of December, there might be some things that Mr. Spurgeon here would like to use in the state of the city address as well, so we're hoping to have that raw data collected, ready to, for all of you all to view, but certainly by mid-December, by your last city council meeting, you'll have all the data compiled and prepared for you to start making some informed decisions by January.
Good.
If I can, mayor, just because we have some folks in the audience, can I take two minutes and just mention, in the survey, what's happening is, is people starting to hear about the fact that we are considering what I would call initial review or first-cut type projects, because I think the council members are going to be in the unenviable task of having to try to pare the package down that is obviously affordable. And that's why some of the questions were asked, and there were dollars amount put in there, because it's real easy to ask a question that may be for something, however, when you put a price tag next to it, it really brings it into perspective for the citizens. There's a couple things I want to mention, is first, is we did meet with the June and the folks from the senior citizens advisory group, is what I call them, and we asked them to put together some recommendations for you, and they're in the process, with the help of Scott Esmond and Alex Mills, of coming up with some recommendations. So on the survey, it does talk about building an annex to the senior citizens center, so we definitely want to make sure that we ask our seniors to have an opportunity, and maybe June can help us with setting up a computer, so those folks can actually take the survey, because it's going to be very important, because they're simply running out of space. Based on usage, I mean, they are utilizing every single inch of, or square foot, I should say, of that facility. And secondly, is that the VFW, as you know, approached the city a couple of years ago about assistance with a facility, because they lost their facility, and as a result of that, the council has agreed to provide some land next to Memorial Park. Well, since then, you've had other veterans organizations that have an interest in being able to use this building, and because it would be something the city, if in fact, that would make the list, which I'm going to recommend would make the list, which I'm going to recommend that it does, then obviously, then we have to make sure there's equal access. And so, there's a meeting that was held with Vice Mayor Udi and I a couple of weeks ago with some folks about American Legion who wanted to know about what was going on, and I said, "The council really would like for you all to form some type of board to where you could manage the facility and operate it, and the city would do the capital." And so, there's conversations going on now between the various veterans organizations about how they can come together to manage the facility and be a part of this process, and that's why we have our friends from the VFW here this evening, is because, I mean, they were the genesis of making this happen, and now you have other important veterans organizations that want to be a part of it as well. So, I would certainly hope the council would give that strong consideration when you look at it early next year.
Well, I think the involvement of the various veterans groups only strengthens the chances that citizens would be able to approve this, and I think they'll support it in any event, but I think as they see more people coming together to support it, I think that just drives that. So, I'm glad that that's happening. I think it'll be a positive thing.
And I think, too, you know what I mean, it goes along with what you're saying, it's using cities' money, taxpayers' money, and so, all the veterans groups, and that's the ones I spoke to while I commented at, it has to be included in some way, in fact, so, and hopefully, they go to the, run the day-to-day operations of it, because we're going to run out of staff for too much, so.
We did talk.
I'm certainly in favor of it, but we need to be sure, it's going to have to be larger to accommodate all the veterans groups.
Yeah, we also have to balance, we want to make sure that we don't do anything to lessen the awesomeness, as I would say, of our Veterans Park. So, we need to look at the scope, and I did tell that we've sort of had, we have mission creep with now folks that are interested, so we need to look at that. Kenny Swab and Scott Esman put together some architectural ideas on how we would lay it out, so we're going to be looking at those, and we'll be ready to discuss it with council. Couple of other items I want to make sure you're okay with is, I did have them include for your consideration, is what are people's thoughts about building a new city hall somewhere in the next 10 years? And I put that on there, obviously, because sometimes I don't think people fully understand the challenges we have with the building that's aging, that's nearly 40 years old, and obviously, when it comes to public safety facilities, the public is almost always going to say yes. When it comes to city halls, people are a little more finicky, and so, I think if we approach it and say, if we said next year it might be a problem, but if we start educating people on how we've simply run out of space, I think there could be an opportunity for them to consider something, so that's in there. And also, the Rose District, somewhere in the Rose District, the Rose Garden was something that the council, one of my first meetings two years ago, there was a discussion about the commemorative Rose Garden and possibly doing something for that, so that's included in there for the voters to get their, to get their input on that as well. And obviously, there could be some other projects, and when we get the survey result back from folks, there may be other projects that the council has to look at that comes from the public, and then how you meld all that together into a package. And the other thing I wanted to mention was, last Friday, Lori Hill, Norm Stevens and I had a conversation with Jeff Harkman about the possibility of looking at some type of increase in our tourism tax to help support direct marketing, and they were, he and his wife were very supportive, because as you know, Jeff took a very strong position in opposition to that a couple of years ago, and we talked about that, and we also talked about the fact that with our growing community and the fact that we have so many hotel rooms and opportunities, you know, there could be some opportunities for some, need for some additional money for direct marketing, either through an increase in the tax or through what is now known as a TID, which is a Tax Improvement District that is very similar to where the hoteliers would actually place a tax upon themselves to be utilized for a public purpose. That's defined in the state statutes, and so, there's a lot of discussions, so I want the council members know that there is some discussion about looking at that as well, and the response we got initially was favorable. No commitment, but at least favorable looking at it.
Well, I think that we have good projects. It's easier for the voters to vote for taxing the tourists that come to town than it is for taxing themselves, so I think that's, we just have to have a good project that we're going to spend the money on and show them where it's going to go.
And I was pleased to hear, and I meant to say this earlier, about finding ways for the seniors and the older population who may not like having a kiosk at the senior center or something, and because, I think that's, to get the broad spectrum, we need to make it as available as possible, so I was pleased to hear that.
Well, we're still trying to find the exact date on what will work in terms of a vote. The consultant has recommended certain possible dates and recommended against other dates, and so, I need to evaluate that, because this will be my first actual vote, so we want to look at that, and we want to make sure that we advertise it and go forward accordingly. So, it could be in late summer, it could be sometime after the general election, it just, you know, we just have to do it, 2018 is the only criteria, because of the fact that that millage is going to roll off. So, the council will have a full discussion about where you want the millage to be based on the package that is submitted, and we'll be having a special work session or probably two to get your input, because we'll need to go through this. And then finally, as I mentioned, sometime the next day or two, you're going to get a copy of the initial, where we are in terms of the first cut, because our partners at the school district and the chamber are going to be sitting down with the staff next week to get their input on projects and how these projects could affect economic development in our schools, so I want to include that, but since that'll be out there amongst our folks, I want to make sure you all have it as well to look at it, and so, whatever they have, you all will have, and obviously, there'll be draft written all over it, because I know how things go, and, but it's, it'll be a good piece of information for you all to have, because I'm sure they'll want to visit with you individually, if in fact, they get the chance to say, "Hey, we had this meeting with the administration," so we'll work on putting that together for you.
And as far as the survey goes, which item that we're discussing, the, I think it is important we get it out to everyone, and they have access to the senior center, and I think that's really great, so.
Mayor, if I might, just to add to Mr. Spurgeon's comments a little bit, also, citizens should know, too, that there's going to be a number of open-ended questions on here, so we certainly don't want to give an idea that there are predisposed notions and ideas of what those projects are going to look like. A lot of those might be some streets projects that they're going to write in that they particularly would want to see, but as a council, you're going to receive that data kind of aggregated so that you'll see some of those topics that rise to the top of concerns, but they will have the opportunity to write in their own ideas on some projects.
And that's great. It's really a good survey.
I'd make a motion to approve the draft citizen survey to gather feedback for 2018 general obligation bond projects.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy? Yes. Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 9B, considerations discussion, possible approval, authorization to execute a third amendment to the employment agreement by and between the city of Broken Arrow and Michael Spurgeon. Beth Ann?
Yes, sir. The last city council meeting, the council conducted the city manager's evaluation in accordance with the 2015 agreement that has been amended on two prior occasions. One thing that was a little bit interesting about this year is the legal department took quite a bit of time to provide the council and the city manager with statistical information that we felt was pretty important, and was also reviewed by the human resources director in allowing the city council to make an educated and informed decision about any amendments that were going to be made to the city manager's contract. One of the things that, you know, as I have reflected back over the fact sheet and in preparing it, is I think that a lot of individuals really do not appreciate or realize what is involved in running an organization of this size, and particularly, running an organization this size in a very public way. So, I thought it would be helpful, not just to you, but also to the citizens, to provide references from an article that I came across fairly recently involving city manager's compensation. One thing that I found was particularly interesting and a little bit disturbing, frankly, is the comparison between the compensation packages in Texas with those in Oklahoma. It's my fear that Texas, like Arkansas, will continue to take our very talented leadership in municipal realm as they have teachers. And you might have noted in the fact sheet, I utilized two, one not-so comparable city population at 13,000, and another comparable city, Louisville, for sort of the baseline comparisons for the council's review. One thing that I would like to mention is that the salary survey from the Texas City Managers Association is actually available online, so if there's any member of the public that is curious about that, I would strongly encourage them to review that data, because I think it is pretty telling. Following the council meeting last time, I took the direction given by the city council in the preparation of this particular amendment, and I would like to take just a moment and go over a couple of the points. The salary provides for a 2% increase over the existing salary, and this is importantly, I think, consistent with what was provided during the budgetary process to other non-union employees. I know that we continue in negotiations with the IFF. I believe an agreement has been discussed with the FOP, although I'm not sure if it has been voted on yet by the local. It does provide provisions for increased retirement, but one thing that I think is important about that is it's done in an incremental way and is designed to serve as an incentive for long tenure. The term, what I've done is I've added, consistent with council direction, an additional three years, so there was one year remaining on the contract, but the proposed revision will expand it. Another interesting aspect is conversion to paid time off. I would like to thank the human resources director for working with me on this. This is actually, you know, the city of Broken Arrow, it's the goal of Ms. McCormick and also Assistant City Manager Russell Gale, to make the city of Broken Arrow an employer of choice. And in order to do that, it's my understanding that we need to be very circumspect about the benefits that we offer, and the private sector paid time off is fairly commonplace. And so, by you placing this in the city manager's contract, it actually gives you the opportunity to be a visionary and allow staff, specifically the human resources department, to consider application in the future to all non-union employees. Of course, fire and police sworn, you know, that's something that would be handled through the collective bargaining process. A minor increase involves technology. As I advance in age, I'm astonished at how technology follows us 24/7, and so, this minor increase will allow a replacement of cell phones, something that my teenagers don't seem to grasp or appreciate the actual cost associated with. And finally, the last portion of note has to do with an incentive plan, and again, my hat goes off to the human resources director, because she, I contacted her early and often, and I utilized her expertise in terms of framing this particular arrangement. And, you know, one thing, as I reflected back over my 13-ish years as city attorney, I've had four city managers and two acting city managers twice, and so, well, one person two times. So, there, at least in my humble, non-legal opinion, there is a tremendous amount of value in maintaining consistency of leadership at the top, because whenever you have a switch over in management, poor Mr. Gale ends up keeping it between the curves, and I think he probably more than anyone else would welcome consistency in city management. So, it's my understanding and belief that this particular agreement is consistent with the direction that I was previously provided. I believe that it's supported by the law, and, you know, of course, it is subject to an annual appropriation in order to make it compliant with Article 10, Section 26 of the Oklahoma Constitution, and I think it is designed to advance the council's overall objectives of maintaining continuity and leadership and retention of talent. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, the recommendation is there for you.
Any questions of Beth Ann?
Make a motion to approve the third amendment to the employment agreement and authorize its execution.
Second.
Happily.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy? Yes. Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Okay. Item 9C, considerations discussion, possible approval, authorization to execute professional service agreement between the city of Broken Arrow and Dana Centro R. N. D.B.A., whatever, Locken, Dan, LLC, and authorize its execution.
Second.
Thank you.
We got a motion on whatever also, right?
Yes. Nick, they told me to change their name.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy? Yes. Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
We got a request to table, item 9D.
So moved.
Second.
Table to 10-3, I guess, is what it says.
Yes, sir.
Table to the next meeting. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy? Yes. Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
We've got a request to table, item 9D.
So moved.
Second.
Table to 10-3, I guess, is what it says.
Yes, sir.
Table to the next meeting. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy? Yes. Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
We've got a request to table, item 9D.
So moved.
Second.
Table to 10-3, I guess, is what it says.
Yes, sir.
Table to the next meeting. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy? Yes. Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Item 9E, considerations discussion, possible award of the lowest responsible bid to Magnum Construction to approve and authorize execution of a construction contract for the public safety training facility. Alex Mills?
Alex Mills, Director of Engineering, Mayor, Council. We're here tonight to request your approval to award contract for the police downrange building. It's a pre-fabricated metal building to be located near the training building, south of the training building, near the firing range. It'll include specialized training areas, interior, bathrooms, and storage areas. We advertised for bids on August 4th and 11th, and bids were opened on August 29th. Seven bids were received. The low bidder was Magnum Construction with a base bid of $473,229. There were two alternates bid as well. Those numbers are listed in the fact sheet. We delayed coming to the last council and came to this council because that was over our allotted budget, so we went back to the fire department, and they had some money allocated, sales tax for this project, and they went back and got some extra money from the police enhancement fund to cover the fact that it was over our geo-bond, so we now have the funding in place to award the project, and we're here tonight to ask your recommendation for that. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions of Alex?
Would that be the complete project, the two addendums to?
No, actually, it's just a word for alternate one, the Wayne's coding.
That's the way I read it, alternate one, okay.
And while it's, we understand it's always the lowest bid, it's always nice when it's a local contract.
Exactly, and Magnum's quality firmly enjoy working with them.
Make a motion, we award the lowest responsible bid to Magnum Construction Incorporated and approve and authorize execution of a construction contract for public safety training facility, downrange building, and site preparation.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy? Yes. Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Alex. Item 9F, considerations discussion, possible approval, resolution number 1057. Beth Ann?
Yes, sir. This is basically a resolution which would allow the city to move forward with acquisition of approximately 11.34 acres over on South First Street. This is actually something I feel a little bit... This is actually something I feel a little bit badly being the one talking about this, because Steve Arant has absolutely spearheaded the effort from the very beginning. In fact, there must be at least 500,000 emails from Steve back and forth with the Windstream, and he absolutely has been the driving force between, behind this acquisition. One other thing that, that I, I think it's pretty important to mention is, this is a really good use of taxpayer dollars. Not only was Steve able to negotiate a price, or Mr. Arant, excuse me, negotiated a price that was below appraised value, but I believe in his mind, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but this, this is the, the perfect facility, very thoughtful, thinking in terms of long-term growth, the location, the size, the, the facilities. And this, this is a project that's been many, many years in, in progress, and, and pretty much as, as a result of his diligence in getting this done. What this resolution does, like I said, is it enables us to move forward with acquisition, it authorizes the purchase price, and designates the mayor, vice mayor as necessary to move forward with, with the acquisition and closure. I'll be happy to answer any questions, but, you know, once again, I would like to emphasize that, that all of the credit goes to him and Assistant City Manager Kenny Schwab, as he, he swooped in and assisted with inspections and everything else that needed to be done, so.
Any questions of Beth Ann, Steve, or Kenny?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 1057, authorize its execution.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Item 9G, consideration discussion, possible approval of reappointment of Mike Barron to the Broken Arrow Downtown Advisory Board. Norm Stevens?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Mike Barron was appointed to the Broken Arrow Downtown Advisory Board in 2013. He has been a very valuable asset to the DAB and has agreed to continue to serve on the Downtown Advisory Board if reappointed. He is appointed by Counselor Deborah Wimpy in his new term within October 1st, 2021. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Norm?
Do you want me to make the question?
Don't you make the motion.
Oh, you don't have it pulled up.
Either you or me.
Okay. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of Mike Barron to the Broken Arrow Downtown Advisory Board with the term expiring October 1st, 2021.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Item 10, preview ordinances or are none. Item 11, ordinances. 11A, consideration discussion, possible adoption of ordinance number 3498. Beth Ann?
Yes, sir. This ordinance was previewed at the last city council meeting. We had staff add the emergency clause on this so that they wouldn't have to publish it in its entirety, and also to enable staff to move forward with the amendments that, that are previously discussed. Other regions will bring us more in line with what other cities are doing. I'll be happy to answer any questions. We request that you adopt ordinance 3498 and approve the emergency clause.
Any questions of Beth Ann?
Make a motion, we adopt ordinance number 3498.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Move for the emergency clause.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Item 12, remarks and inquiries by governing body members. Any remarks or inquiries?
I just want to thank you for this, your service to the city and everything you're doing for our city, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I will go on to item 13 and, and remarks and updates by city managers, so it's, it's, it's your showdown.
Thank you, sir, members of council. Just a couple of items, I know we have a few things in executive session. I did send out, actually Jennifer sent out to you today, notice about a reception for the finalists for the chief of police recruitment. Yesterday, I did narrow the, the field to two, one internal candidate and one external candidate. The council later this week is going to get a bio on each of those individuals for you to look at, so there will be a come and go reception next, next Tuesday, excuse me, yeah, next Tuesday evening above Main Street Tavern. All the department directors have been invited, as well as our partners with the school district, so we are inviting Union School District and their superintendent as well, as well as the BA, Public Schools, our chamber, our EDC, and also, in my overzealousness, I mentioned that I invite all the police department and personnel to come. So I'm hoping that, you know, there will be 15 or 20 officers and some of the support staff come as well, I mean, it's their chief. And so I'm hoping that they'll come out, and I'll send an email out to them. I feel very, very comfortable and excited about the two candidates we have. It's a great city, had a great, had a great response, and I feel very, very good about the two people that the council's gonna get a chance to meet next week. And then I still have some deliberations to do, which is, it's gonna be a hard decision, which I think is good for our community, so I'm excited.
Do you have 22 applicants?
We actually had over 30. We had over 30, over 30 applicants apply for this position, very talented pool, and I'm very excited about our internal candidate, and I'm also excited about, you know, the other person. And it was very difficult yesterday, and I want to thank the members of the, the review committee, and that included a member of the FOP. I think it's important that our, our labor union have an opportunity to participate in the process, along with Russell and our former retired deputy chief of police, now economic development extraordinaire, was basically there. And so it's been, it's been a real, real good process. We did video interviews this time to help narrow the field versus the, the old traditional phone calls. So I'm excited for the council to meet them, as well as all the staff members. I'm asking all the directors come out, because it's gonna be one of their peers, and they're gonna be working with this individual. I want to thank Krista and her team for the 2018 financial newsletter. I'm very excited about, about what we put together. The one thing that I wanted to mention is I like all the information about the finances. There's another section starting towards the, the back, which is about the projects, which tells the folks really how their money's being spent for capital improvements, and it's broken down. The way Krista put it together, it's really, really simple to read about what is, what we're gonna be doing this fiscal year. And so, I mean, that's, everything we're doing is around trying to make sure the public knows that when they give us the money, that we spend it well, and that we follow through on, on our word. And so I think this document demonstrates that. So I want to thank all the directors for their input, because I'm on them pretty hard about getting that information in, because it's like one hand clapping if you don't tell people all the good things you're doing, and there's a lot of good work that's being done. And I just want to close by saying thank you for your confidence and, and support for, for me since I've been here. It'll be two years tomorrow, so I'm very, very blessed to be in Broken Arrow, and I, I wake up every morning knowing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we do have executive session, so I entertain a, a motion for a brief recess to go into BETA and BAMA.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
I'll call the Broken Arrow Municipal Authority Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Udi?
Here.
Thurman?
Here.
Here. Item 3, consideration of consent agenda, are there any items to be removed?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.